Okay. So we're going to go ahead and get started. So these programs, somewhat unique. It could take place in more of a town hall style format. As you know, we had previously asked any of our chapter leaders to send us their questions or topics related to chapter management. And we did receive some great questions, so I hope that the information that we covered today that you'll find very helpful. Our first question we were asked is, "How do we better conduct board meetings?" And while you'll hear me reference terms associated with other committee meetings, please note that many of these tips that we discussed today can really be applied to any of your meetings. So it's a committee meeting, anything with your annual meeting, your educational meeting, but a lot of these tips can be applied in the same way. First, there are three major keys to a successful meeting: preparation, engagement, and follow-through. First, let's go ahead and start with preparation, and really more specifically, the president's responsibilities that include creating the agenda as well as running the entire meeting from start to finish. They'll need to be sure the meeting stays on course and, of course, follows the agenda as it's written. They need to be a skilled facilitator, but can stimulate conversation and lead the discussion in a diplomatic manner. They can do so by trying to prevent one-sided discussions, which can also help to create a positive environment among your board members. Presidents should delegate and monitor work assignments of their members and move members toward participation and decision-making. So they are doing quite a bit of encouragement, a little bit of truth, but you are the key point in running those board meetings to make sure that they are running efficiently and smoothly and that work is done. And, of course, you want to be sure to recognize each other's contributions. You want to actively listen and, of course, provide constructive criticism, work, share your own experiences, and, of course, appropriate subject lines. I'm hearing a little bit of background noise. If you can, mute your phone. We'll open it up to questions here in just a bit. At that time, you can unmute your phone, but for now, let's leave those quiet so we don't have any background noise or other distractions. And much of the success of a meeting is a result of being prepared. So in addition to the president being prepared, all members should come prepared to the meeting. They should read through the reports ahead of time and become familiar with all of the meeting topics listed within the agenda. The president should first send out a request for agenda items or reports prior to the board meeting so that all concerns or issues of importance are sure to be included in the agenda and addressed at the meeting. And then, once the president and the chair has prepared the agenda and all the reports have been submitted, which should be submitted prior to the meeting, they should be distributed to your board members as a packet so they have time to review and get become familiar with the topics that they may not be familiar with. Within preparation, an agenda is an effective tool that helps to keep meetings running on time, and it also ensures that all the topics are given adequate time to be discussed. Agendas should include the following items: the call to order, roll call, the previous meeting's minutes, the treasurer's full report, any officers, your president-elect, your secretary, your membership chair may have reports, of course, your committee reports also, any old or unfinished business from the previous meeting, any new business. And if you wish, you can include a portion of your meeting dedicated to open discussion for any other members besides the board members that may attend, and then, of course, adjournments. We're going to dive into these in a little bit more detail just a little bit later, but this currently here is what each of your agendas should include, and any item that you do discuss will actually fall into any one of these categories. Their format can be found on ANFP Connect under Sample Templates. Basically, again, anything that's discussed at the board meetings is going to fall into one of these categories. But the agenda is a really important step in meeting preparation and process, and it's really going to help with your flow of a meeting and the efficiency of your overall meeting. And now, some of you, I know, will be assigned to create or submit reports, and these should actually consist of a few items at each time, too. What the committee or the task force name is, so if you're the membership committee, perhaps it's a task force. And then, if you are a board member or a chair, what position you hold should also be included on there. The body of the reports will list the status update of the projects or tasks, and you should really use bullet points during the discussion portion of the meeting. So when you're reporting out, you're not necessarily reading your reports, but you're summarizing of what your committee work has been consistent of. This is when you can add any of the details. They don't need to necessarily be noted within your report. The report should really be straightforward and to the point. You can certainly highlight key projects or initiatives that have been completed, but you want to do that in bullet point format. And right here, again, we have a sample of the template. We have you would put your state, chapter board meeting, the date of the board meeting, who it's to, who it's from, the date of the actual report that it was created, and then what is the report regarding. So perhaps it's something like membership recruitment or student members. Here's where you include the body of the report and then... So I'm just going to pause here, as this is a town hall meeting, certainly with any of our other chapters yet, I'm going to open it up to questions. Any questions? We'll see if there's anybody... Okay, so again, the agenda and the board report templates are both living on ANFP Connect under Volunteer Resources. They're a great guide as you work through your reports or you're creating an agenda. Certainly, feel free to use a different kind of format, but we do encourage you to include these items within either the agenda or the report, depending on which one you're creating. Okay, moving on. So with engagement, the chair serves as both the leader of the committee as well as the skilled facilitator of the discussion, but they should be using Robert's Rules of Order or parliamentary procedure, which we're going to dive into just a little bit later. The chair, the president, will facilitate the work of the committee. They provide oversight, and they ensure that the goals and their objectives are met. Presidents can stimulate discussion and let members work out their ideas. This might take some time. There might be some awkward silence at first, but keep in mind that some may not feel comfortable speaking up right away. It just really depends on their own personalities mixed with those of others, but you always want to be encouraging and open, either to everybody's opinions, if people have questions, really help to facilitate that discussion so they're not all one-sided conversations or there's only, you know, it's the same person always speaking up. And as members, you can support the president or each other when you're responsible to each other and to the organization or the chapter, and you can do this by working collaboratively with others. And again, your difference of opinions are given. There are still ways to work with one another to ultimately achieve the goal or complete the project, though. And as leaders, you're responsible for managing and executing the work, just as projects and tasks are assigned. You want to be sure you're engaging in discussion and feel competent in doing so. Don't be afraid, don't hesitate to add to discussion, since everybody's opinion is worthy. Nobody is usually right or wrong, and at the same time, you want to be respectful of others' ideas and opinions. So any questions here about engagement? I'd like to hear from some of you and how your engagement works within your board meetings. Do most of you feel like this is how your board meetings operate currently? Do you think there are some areas for improvement, and if so, what those might be? No, nobody? Okay. All right, let's keep going here. Another key to a successful meeting is follow-through. So when you're working through the agenda, you're going to determine the next steps, and you want to ensure clear directions are given to the person or persons involved with completing the task or taking the next steps. Everyone involved understands what needs to happen next, and if necessary, assign a key contact. So this really depends on the project or the task that needs to be taken care of. It might involve one person, it might involve many people. If it does involve many people, I would suggest having a key contact, so somebody is responsible for updating the board when a progress report is requested. Additionally, another key area of follow-through is minutes from the meeting should be completed and turned around pretty quickly. Ideally, it's within 24 hours. However, I know many of us are very busy, and this is volunteer work, so certainly get those done as quickly as you can. And this is typically handled by the secretary. Most cases, you want to send out a draft of the minutes to the board so they can review it, check for accuracy, make sure things are stated correctly, make sure that assignments are delegated to the correct people, that the timeframes are correct, and so on. Then, of course, you can post a final copy to the entire membership if they request it. That should always be made available to your members at any given time. We're going to go over into the details of meeting minutes here in just a bit as well, but I do want to stress the importance of those and how important it is to get those quickly turned around and make those available to your members should they ask. And just a few other things to keep in mind as you're working at the board, like how often you plan to meet. You may wish to create a schedule just a few months in advance, this will ensure that everyone will be able to plan and participate, so there's no excuses that, you know, they didn't know the date. Hopefully, they're able to work their own schedule around that. So you are meeting consistently as a group, so you can get the work done. That's what the board essentially is there to meet, is to get work done and progress. And, of course, be prepared to submit your meeting topics, contribute to the discussions, and, of course, the decision-making process. You want to be prepared to report out at meetings. If you are a liaison for a committee or if you are overseeing a project or a task, be sure that you are able to speak to what's been going on with your project. If there's anything you need, be sure that you're prepared to ask the board for that. And, of course, last, board or committee or even chapter members should expect to understand and feel comfortable using Robert's Rules of Order, which, again, we are going to touch on here in just a bit. Okay, so are there any questions here? We wanted to understand how to better conduct our board meetings. So you're really going to have three key steps, and that's, again, preparation, engagement, and follow-through. So keep those in mind as you're planning for your board meeting, perhaps you're planning for an educational meeting, but those are all keys to a successful meeting. Any other best practices that you may have that you'd like to share with the group as to what makes your meeting successful? No? Okay. So we're going to move on here to another question we received that is related to board meetings again, and specifically, how to take meeting minutes. I thought this was a great question, and really, it applies to each of our chapters. I first, I really want to start by stating that meeting minutes are not meant to be written word for word. Meetings are essentially a historical record for chapter business of what happened during a board meeting, not what was said. They should summarize the important parts of the meeting and include any action taken or voting that took place along with the results of the vote. They should also be used as your to-do list, so board members understand what their responsibilities or projects are from the time that that board meeting ends until the next board meeting takes place. So again, you should be leaving that board meeting as a board member, knowing what you are to do next and the next steps to take it. Then, assuming that you've already set the date for your next board meeting, you understand the timeline as to when it needs to be completed. So minutes are an essential part to that and helping you keep organized, making sure you're staying on task, and making sure that work is getting done. So I'm actually going to start breaking this down of what should be included in the meeting minutes and how they should be written so they're clear for everybody to reference throughout that timeframe. First, the call to order. This is start of the meeting, it's called to order, and the date and time are stated and officially noted for the minutes. This is the time when the president can also ask members if they have any changes to the agenda, and they can amend the agenda as needed, which also should be noted in the minutes. Roll call. Now, this is important, might just sound like you're taking attendance, but you're taking note of who is present and who is absent in order to establish a quorum. Now, for those of you that aren't familiar with a quorum, it's a minimum number of members of a group that must be present at any of its meetings in order to make the proceedings or the business of that meeting valid. So a quorum typically consists of at least two-thirds of a board. It's really going to depend on how your bylaws are written. You'll have to look into that a little bit deeper, depending on your chapter, but unless you have that sort of chunk of people or percentage of board members at the meeting, it will not validate the business that you have done. So you want to ensure that you're having at least a quorum at your board meetings. Of course, ideally, all board members attend every single board meeting. Next, in your minutes, you're going to have the approval of the previous meeting's minutes. You can ask if there's any questions, concerns, or changes to the minutes from the last meeting. However, these questions or concerns about minutes should have already been brought up previously. If not, it is acceptable to do at this time, and the minutes should be approved before moving forward to the next piece of the meeting minutes. And I just received a question here. I'll kind of get us off course a little bit. Somebody had asked if any of the members can attend the board meetings, and the answer is yes. Because we are not a privately held organization, we are a non-profit public organization, yes, they can. Now, if you have private matters to discuss, this is when you would call an executive session, and this would just consist of your executive committee members. But even as you, as members out there, you are welcome to attend board meetings for the national board because all of this information should be made available to you at any time. The only time you would not be permitted to attend something like that is when they call the executive session, and that's private. So I hope that answers your question. Thank you for that question. And let's jump back over here to our meeting minutes. The next piece is going to be your treasurer's report. Now, the treasurer is going to be responsible for creating the report and reporting the current financial status of the chapter to the board and other members that are present, just as we discussed. The treasurer's report should include the period which the report covers, so perhaps it's June 1st to August 31st, the cash balance at the beginning of that time period, the income received and the expenses paid during that time period, and the cash balance at the end of the period. And on the actual report, there should be a signature of the treasurer. Now, on the writing the minutes, the secretary is going to want a summarized report and include the figures and the dates as stated in the treasurer's report. And as you can see here in our example on the screen, this is just what we've done. So the report of the cash balance from the given time period, income received after fall meeting invoices totaling, and that's been paid, and then the ending cash balance in XXX numbers. So again, use this to reference when you are creating treasurer's reports, and basically, the secretary is just going to summarize what you've done. And next, we have our officer reports. And this is a portion of the meeting when our officers, such as the president-elect, the treasurer-elect, may have reports, and they can update you on the status of the projects that they have going on. Similarly, to our treasurer's report, you want to summarize the report, add any motions or voting results as they happen. And here you see we have the officer's report, the president-elect, and here we see the committee report. So they're very similar in nature. Again, when you're writing the minutes, you're summarizing. You're not saying what was said word for word, but what happened, if there were proposals, motions, and how they were voted upon. And next is old or unfinished business. So this is any business that was not finalized or pending from the previous board meeting, and it may require... It can also include any matter that was pending when the previous meeting adjourned, any matter on the previous meeting's agenda that was not reached, or matters that were postponed to the present meeting. These items, again, need to be summarized. Depending on the motion and the voting results, they should also be noted, as you see in the sample here. And I also want to point out, within the motions, typically, how I write them, or how I've written them in the past, is I put this person's last name who proposed the motion, and then the person who seconded the motion, I put their last name following that. So this is something that we can reference if we need to further down the line. And next is new business. So at this time, members can introduce any new item for consideration at this time. The board can choose to address the item at the moment, or they may wish to postpone it until the next meeting. It's entirely up to them. However, if there is new business and it's discussed, it's going to need to be documented, similar to the other reports that take place throughout the meeting. And one other piece I have in here, it's completely optional, is open discussion. It's a little bit different from new business. It's an opportunity for your members or your meeting participants to add anything noteworthy to the meeting. So perhaps somebody's having a membership anniversary, some kind of significant life event took place. It's really other important, non-business-related news that you would talk about in open discussion. And again, that's just an optional piece of the agenda. And, of course, the last piece of your meeting minutes. You're officially calling the meeting to a close and noting the date and time. So once the draft of the meetings has been prepared, it should be reviewed by the board for accuracy, and then pending any changes, it should be distributed to the board as a final copy and made available to members if they request. So give me one moment here, and I'm going to pull up the sample of the board meeting minutes in its entirety. So here, you'll see, similar to what was on the slide, for those of you that have joined us on the web portion, and again, these samples are out on ANFP Connect if you wanted to reference them at any time. So within the final minutes, you're inserting the date and time. You can even include the location if you meet face-to-face or if it was a conference call. You're editing the time, I'm sorry, including the time here, the meeting was called to order at 2:00, and so on and so forth. Here, you're noting in your roll call the members that are present, those that are non-present, your approval of minutes. Now here, I just want to pause and give you a pointer. So with the approval of the previous meeting's minutes, a second motion, excuse me, a second to move the motion is not needed if there are changes or objections to the minutes. So say Mary Johnson, the treasurer, proposes that the minutes from the previous meeting be approved. If there were no objections, nobody wanted to discuss, or a point of clarification, they don't need a second. So you would just simply write in your minutes "approved," rather than naming the two people that proposed the motion and the one that seconded. Here, again, we have the treasurer's report, and, of course, you want to be sure in the minutes to include the things that the treasurer should include in their report. And again, you're putting the person who proposed the motion and the board member that seconded the motion, and whether or not it was approved. Here we have our officer's reports. And here I include an example of a motion that was rejected. So if a motion is rejected, this is the time where you're going to need to note the vote, how it was voted upon. Three rejected it, and two approved it, and it didn't pass. The motion failed. So this is how you want to note it within your meeting minutes. And then here we go with our different types of committees and their reports. Again, pretty straightforward in what we discussed, the two people that put the motion up for a vote and the second. And here is your old business, so pending items from your last board meeting. I did not enter new business in here, but I think by this time, most of you will understand to get the idea of how to write our meeting minutes and our motions. And then, of course, adjournments, when we're stating the time that the meeting was adjourned. So I just want to stop here. I know there's kind of a lot that I threw out there, and ask if there's any questions from anybody about meeting minutes. Okay, so I did get a question on chat. This is a great question. "We have our meetings online. How should we have the treasurer sign?" You could absolutely do this electronically. You know, the treasurer would write the report, they would sign their name electronically. I know a lot of our chapter leaders do this work with our affiliate agreement, and it's perfectly acceptable. Maybe, once they sign it, it's to PDF or protect that document so it cannot be edited again. Okay? Any other questions? Okay. Super. All right, so let's get back to our presentation. So now, I'm going to go ahead and round out the discussion of board meetings. I apologize here. Give me one minute. There we go. And that's, so, you know, we've talked about the agenda formats and the reports, but now I want to talk a little bit more about how they can run a little bit more efficiently and how they can be more organized. So, excuse me, and now we're going to jump into Robert's Rules of Order. And these are means to run the meeting in an organized, diplomatic, and efficient manner. They help to establish and maintain order. They allow the group to conduct business in an orderly fashion, so we're not just randomly picking topics, but again, we're following a certain order based on the agenda. It gives a better... Not just one person. It addresses one subject at a time, and with Robert's Rules of Order, majority rules, but it still allows for the minority to state their opinions and be heard. It also keeps meetings civil during those times of sensitive discussion matters as well. Now, before we can apply this method of governing, we need to understand how it works or how we can use it. Keep in mind that its purpose is to keep the meeting organized and running efficiently. So I really want to stress this. It's okay not to follow every single rule every single time. What I don't want to see everyone get caught up in is the rules so much that the business of the board meetings becomes stressful or that the board isn't able to accomplish anything because we're caught up in the Robert's Rules of Orders. So maybe think of them as a strong guideline to help keep your meeting on track. And now, as we go through these Robert Rules of Orders, a lot of this will look familiar since it really does tie into the agenda. So I'm just going to give you a few pointers to note. One, the president should not be formulating motions, nor should they be voting. Other members of the board should be proposing and seconding the motions, which we discussed earlier. Additionally, the only time the president should vote is if there's a tie. And I know some of your boards and your executive committees are on the smaller side, so that may be the case for your particular chapter, but this is sort of a typical rule in Robert's Rules of Order, so just something to keep in mind if your chapter expands and your board expands. And I'm going to be sure to point out some other tips or rules as we go along here as well. As we discussed, the president will start by calling the meeting to order by stating the date and time, then he or she will take roll call or attendance to establish a quorum, followed by the approval of the previous meeting's minutes. And one thing to note here is as long as there are no changes or objections to the minutes, as we discussed, they can be proposed as a motion without a second. So if you do have an objection when it comes to the approval of minutes, then you're going to need that motion to be seconded, and of course, you know, and note anything that changes within those minutes. Those should be documented as well. Next, the president would ask the treasurer to present the report to the board, and the treasurer is going to summarize the report, as we discussed earlier. And then, again, this would need to be put up for a motion, so say, the secretary would say all those in favor of approving the October 25th treasurer's report, and that all the board members, with the exception of the president, would respond by stating "aye." And then, the secretary would then ask all those that object or oppose, and again, if anybody objected or opposed, this is when they would say "aye," and that would need to go into discussion. So anytime there's objections to a motion, you need to be sure to clarify or discuss further so that everybody is eventually okay with moving forward. That doesn't mean that a motion can't be approved, however, because with Robert rules, again, majority rules. So once that motion passes, the president announces that the motion was approved, and it's noted within the minutes. Following the treasurer's report, the remainder of the report should be approached in the same format, but again, if you come to somewhere where there's an objection or somebody says point of clarification, some more discussion may be required or something needs to be clarified, then these are when the rules should definitely be applied. And in this case, let's go through that. First, you would obtain the floor, and you can do this at the meeting by rising from your chair, depending on what kind of meeting it is. If you're in the audience, that's how you can kind of approach that. Or if you're in a board meeting in a smaller setting, you may just simply ask the president, "May I have the floor?" The president would then acknowledge the member by giving them the floor. They could state, "You have the floor," or maybe it's a simple nod. So once that member has the floor, they should be given the board's full attention. No cross-talk or interruptions should be permitted. If there are questions for board members or other audience members, they should wait until the person with the floor is finished and then state point of information, and at that point, they can ask for more information or their questions. Or perhaps, if you're in disagreement with the motion and you'd like more time to think about it. There are a few ways to steer the conversation, depending on what you'd like to accomplish. And as you can see here from their examples, there's several ways to do that, depending on what you'd like to do. So maybe you're in partial agreement with the motion, and you just want to amend the motion slightly. Once you had the floor, you would simply say, "I move to amend the motion to," and then state the motion. You would then, of course, need a second. But now, if there are no objections or postponements, requests made for the motion, a member would then put, that's when the motion, of course, goes up for a vote. So this is also available on ANFP Connect. I think it's a great tool to reference. You may wish to distribute that to your board members so they become familiar with more of these things, so they can use those during the business meeting. And now, let's go through presenting new business. So again... So again, after you have the floor, you can make your presentation, you know, make your argument per se, and then the motion. You would say, "I move that we move," this is just an example now, "I move that we move the fall meeting dates to October." Now, once you've made your motion and there is no further clarification or discussion, again, somebody will need to second your motion. However, if there is discussion, it may result in an amended motion or even tabling the motion, that's postponing the motion for further discussion at another time for another board meeting. If none of that discussion or no amended motion happens, then it's going to need a second when another member would simply say "second" or the president can call for a second. Now, if nobody wants to second your motion, it's going to be lost and it will not be put to a vote, and that's done. If there is a second, the chair puts the motion to avoid a vote, by simply saying, "All in favor of moving the fall meeting dates to October?" Again, those in favor respond "aye." All opposed? Those opposed respond "no." The chair takes the count and announces the results of the vote by saying, "Motion approved" or "Motion rejected." So again, with the motion rejected, you need to make sure that you're keeping count of who approved it and who rejected it within the notes. So again, I'm going to pause here. I know this is sort of a challenging format. It's really not ideal for learning Robert's Rules of Order, but I'm hoping you get some better understanding of it. And again, I'd really encourage you to go out to ANFP Connect under Volunteer Resources and click on, under Board Governance, there's a document called Parliamentary Procedure. Click on that document. It has some great pointers. I think your board members would find it really useful and help you gain a really clear understanding of how Robert's rules work, Robert, excuse me, Robert's Rules of Orders work. Another thing I would suggest to you is checking out YouTube for videos of demonstrations of Robert's Rules of Orders in action. I find those to be very helpful. You know, me sitting here, not being able to see you folks out there and talking through the phone is not the greatest way to understand that conversation and how those motions and seconds work between a group of people. So definitely encourage you to go and check those out. So I'm going to stop here. That was kind of a lot to throw out there, but are there any questions about Robert's Rules of Order? No? Let me check chat here. Okay, and again, you know, as you're working through that as a board and you're learning that set of rules, again, it doesn't have to be so black and white. It doesn't have to be so rigid. It's going to be a learning process, especially as you have new members rotating on the board. They're going to need to learn that also. But really look at it as a tool to keep things, keep your business meeting organized and to keep it efficient, okay? All right. So you're also going to want to decide what kind of voting is going to work best for your particular board meeting or depending on the subject at hand. And there are several ways that you can vote on a motion. One, as we just discussed with by voice, the president asks those in favor. They say aye. Those opposed say no. And any member can move for an exact count if they want to. So if it's a close tie, they may ask for a count. By roll call, this is when you would go down each member on the list of present. They would answer yes or no when their name is called. And this method is great to use when you want to record each individual vote that's required. By general consent, when a motion is not likely to be opposed, the president says, "If there's no objection, the membership shows agreement by their silence." However, if one member says, "I object," then the item has to be put up for a vote. By division, this is a slight verification of voice vote. It does not require a count unless the chairman wishes. And members can raise their hands or stand to vote. And by ballot, members write their vote on a slip of paper. This method is used when secrecy is desired or for confidentiality reasons. And then just again, as a board, within a board meeting, for motions to pass, there must be a quorum. And again, this is the minimum number of members needed to be present in order to validate that business. And your chapter should have determined that and that should be listed within your bylaws. All right, so are there any questions on board meetings, agendas, minutes, or Robert's Rules of Orders, relate the overall organization for your board meetings? Okay. Well, if you'd like more information or any of the templates, the documents for these particular topics, we encourage you to use all the resources at your disposal. Certainly, reach out to your other chapter leaders and ask how perhaps they run their meetings more efficiently, if they have any other tips or maybe other samples for you to look at. The Chapter Portal, great organization tool, certainly at your disposal 24/7. We do have chapter chats that are archived. Those are on the ANFP YouTube channel. And that gives them great information as well in terms of your roles and responsibilities and how to run your meetings efficiently. And of course, ANFP Connect under Volunteer Resources, where our templates and our how-tos live. This is also a wonderful resource for anything that we discussed today. Okay, so let's move on to some of our other questions that we received. And this question pertains to access or editing posting capabilities to our chapter website. Specifically, why does ANFP now manage the websites rather than chapter managing their own? Prior to my time here, I know, I understand, chapters are responsible for hosting and managing our own websites. And since we're doing our own ANFP website a couple of years ago, we decided to begin hosting and managing our chapter websites as well. The reason for this was that it allows for consistent branding across the board. This allows our members and non-members to recognize the brand, ANFP, and come to know and rely on the brand that we've created as CDMs. It also speaks to our professionalism as an organization to have consistent branding from chapter to chapter, as well as any of our links or resources related to the food service industry. It really allows us to streamline that information, certainly related to advocacy, resources, and again, any other issues surrounding the food service and nutrition industries. And also, by hosting all of the chapters' websites, we can provide this service in a much more stable and economical fashion to our members than if they were to operate their own websites. And I know while our members do not have direct access or editing capabilities, they're still able to post about just about anything and everything for their own chapter websites. And I think everybody knows that you can submit website edits via the chapter portal. And us as staff, we're more than happy to post this information, any documents or other resources that you think your members might find valuable. So I don't want, just because you don't have direct access to your chapter websites, we don't want to deter any of that information being posted out there. So right now, I'm actually going to take a moment. I'd like to show you a brief tutorial on how to be able to do that. Give me one second. You're going to see my screen disappear here for just a moment as I log in. You're with me? Okay. So now, those of you are probably, some of you probably are familiar with the chapter portable, excuse me, chapter portal. But for those of you that aren't, you would simply log in. Once you get to the ANFP online page, you would go to your member portal, which I believe lives up here. From there, you would enter into your chapter portal on the left-hand side. And then from there, you would want to go to Chapter Website Edits. Here, you're going to list the state in which you're a member of, your name, your email address, and what page to your ANFP chapter site do you want updated. So it could be your event details. It could be your chapter news. If you have some resources that you'd like made available to your members, this is where you would put that here. And you could even copy and paste the URL. If not, it'd be fine for you to just type it in here. We would understand what you mean. And this, would you like to add text, edit text, remove text? This just gives me and my staff a little bit more information as to what you'd like happen to that page and the information that you'd like posted. Here is where you could attach your file. So if you had a handout for a meeting, if you have a registration form, this is where you're going to go ahead and upload your file. Here, you can add any additional instructions that will go directly to our chapter's inbox. And we receive that almost immediately. Once you do complete these fields, you want to go ahead and click Submit. And again, that goes directly to our chapter's inbox. Typically, we try to get anything posted within at least one to two days, depending on when you send it in. Now, I know some of you have sent in PayPal links, and those do take a little bit longer. Those take about seven to 10 business days to get posted because we do have to send those out to an outside vendor for that link to be created. So, but again, feel free to send us anything that you'd like. You know, I think I just got a question here about meeting minutes. And it's really, well, the question here is it okay to email minutes to our membership each month or should they be posted on the chapter portal? So the thing with the chapter portal is not everybody has access to it. It's only chapter leaders. So that's probably not the best place for them. You could certainly email them to them. If you wanted to include them in your newsletter, you could do that. You could even do a summary of the minutes so you'd be shortening the minutes more than they already had been. Whichever you choose to do, sometimes, you know, chapters may just wish to keep them on file and have those available as members request them. It's totally up to you how you do that. But make sure that they are well documented in case that question does come up. And maybe you just pick and choose some highlights from the board meeting that you'd like to put in your newsletter or an email or president's message, something like that. Okay, so are there any questions here about website edits? No? Okay. Well, again, I just encourage you to send us anything you have. We're more than happy to post that. All right, so we're going to switch over here back to the presentation. And now, we have one last question. And that question is, "Is there a chat room available for chapter leaders to talk to each other in real time?" So we don't necessarily have a chat function. Some of you may be familiar with that function via Facebook, which is kind of like an instant messenger. We don't have that available for our chapter leaders, nor do we have that available to the entire membership. But we do have online forums, and they have functions that are fairly similar. With Open Forum, some of you are probably familiar with that, as well as the Chapters Volunteer Leaders Forum, you can post questions in real time. But you might not get a response in real time. And that just depends on the members and how they have their message digest set up. And that could be, they could have it set up in real time, so they may get that message right away. They can set it up daily or weekly. So if you post that question on Monday, perhaps another volunteer leader